City Emergency Management Authority and ask everyone to rise. This is a pledge of allegiance and an invitation. Face the flag, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you be with me, please? Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you tonight just asking your blessings over this meeting. Lord, just be with those affected by the weather over the last three to four days. Lord, just keep all the first responders safe that are out helping with cleanup. Or just be with each and every one of us here this evening. Give us the very best we can, the knowledge, the very best knowledge we can, to do the very best job we can for the citizens of this town. We have this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Good evening to everyone. And before I start, I'll thank two gentlemen in the back for your unwavering duties to trying to make sure the citizens of this town and county stay safe with emergency management. Got to watch you guys in action last night and thank you for that. There was, there was a lot going on in that little room last night, and a lot of warnings and, and things happening and shifting in a hurry. And appreciate all your diligence of staying on top of that. Should ever, give everyone a little bit of comfort. And it wasn't you guys hitting the button every time it happened, it was some of the National Weather Service, so. But don't, if anybody's watching, don't take that for granted. If the sirens going off, it may not be in your backyard, but it's somewhere in the area heading our way. So take those warnings seriously. The folks in Oklahoma City, very good testament to that, wasn't really supposed to be anything. And a lot of neighborhoods got destroyed, a lot of homes got destroyed. So luckily, to my knowledge, there's been no loss of life, correct, in these storms over the week?
There was, not in our area.
Not in, okay. Well, just stay weather aware, we, even though it's not springtime, that's normally when it happens, so. Anyway, again, thank you, gentlemen, for that. At this time, with the clerk call roll, please.
Ms. McGee, here. Mr. Sherrill.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Ms. Poe. Chairman Cathy.
Here.
This is the public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and or action to approve or reject the 2025 scheduled meeting dates for the Etoka City Emergency Management Authority?
I recommend approving.
Have a motion and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Chairman Cathy.
Yes.
Let's move down. Is there any trustee comments? Hearing none, do I hear motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
A motion and a second, roll call, please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Cathy.
Yes.
All right, as we move over to our next meeting of the evening, the Etoka City Council, we will start with that, with Kirk, clerk, call roll, please.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Sherrill.
Here.
Ms. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Poe. Chairman Cathy, or, sorry, Mayor Cathy.
Here. And again, this is the public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of October 21st, 2024.
I recommend approving.
A second.
Have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Mayor Cathy.
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and or action regarding accepting or rejecting the city manager's report. Good evening, Mr. Assistant City Manager, in your new position, welcome. We'll try to take it easy on you this evening.
I fielded part of the report, so I can answer to a lot of it. I read the rest of it, so.
All right. Any questions on the report?
I recommend approving.
A second.
Have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Cathy.
Yes.
Item number three, discussion and or action on approving or rejecting blanket purchase orders for the city of Etoka for the month of November 2024.
The purchase orders there were normal, just a standard business, and unless anybody has specific questions.
Okay. Any questions on the purchase orders?
No, I recommend approving.
A second.
Motion and a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Cathy.
Yes.
Item number four, discussion and or action on approving or rejecting offering a Capstone Plus insurance plan to city employees with HealthTech, HealthTech LLC. Is that you, sir?
That is. Mr. Dobson, is this a new added position? Congratulations and condolences, that's great. Okay, so I spoke with Mr. Delay a few weeks ago. We then set up a meeting with Mr. Sandman about there's a new program from Capstone Plus. It's a, it's a new program that's being offered due to a new 125 tax plan that's allowed by the IRS. Basically, it's not meant to take, it's not to take the place of an insurance plan that may exist because of catastrophic coverings. But it does act as a MEC plan. It's an addition to or on top of. This was actually initially made available through the Affordable Care Act. Because of the strain that's been put on our brick and mortar legacy hospital and clinic locations, this has been made a possible. What it is, is this is actually paid for through tax savings. So it doesn't cost the employer, which in this situation would be the city of Etoka, anything. It doesn't cost the employee anything. Their take home pay is actually ends up being a little bit more than what it is now. But it includes four major things. The first three are a family plan. It would be for the employee, a significant other, and independent children up to age 26. It includes a primary care telemedicine. Now, a lot of us have heard of telemedicine. You can get on a phone and call a doctor and they can help figure out what's going on. Eighty-five percent of the reason that people go to emergency clinics or emergency rooms, that can be taken care of through a standard telemedicine. This is actually a primary care telemedicine with urgent care. Ninety-five percent of the reason that people would go to our local emergency room, this could actually take care of. So even now, I still live in McAllister. You go on any social media platforms, not a lot of people are happy with the wake that happens at McAllister Regional Health Center. That ninety-five percent of the reason that the people are there, that could be taken care of with this technology, including referrals to specialists. It also includes telehealth, marriage counseling, smoke cessation, if you want to quit smoking or alcohol, behavioral, behavioral counseling. It also includes a biometrics program on your smartphone that keeps up with blood sugar, heart rate, heart irregular, irregularity. There's a lot of things that it'll actually track that you could do multiple times a day if you wanted to. A quick example, speaking of education, there was a school in Arkansas that just this la, within the last six months, started this program for all of their employees at the school. The assistant superintendent liked the app, she liked the biometrics. Put your finger on the light and do this, and it would take all these readings. Well, about two months later, she gets an email saying you need to go to a heart specialist. And so she reached out, on the app, you can text, you can email, you can phone, or you can video chat with your primary care physician on the spot. So she called and she said, hey, I got this notification. They said, yes, the artificial intelligence has picked up that there's something going on with your heart and you need to get it checked out. And she said, well, I, I just turned sixty, so maybe it's age, but I really don't feel any different. She took the advice, the next day she went in, ninety percent blockage at the top of the widow maker, seventy-five percent at the bottom. There was something, I hope AI never turns into Terminator, but this is the positive part of artificial intelligence. It's because of this that the value of the program is actually more than what the actual program costs. So that's two things, and again, that is for the family. The third thing is there's thirty-seven of the most written prescriptions that are all formulary, generic, that are free, no cost, no co-pay on all of these things. The last thing that's included is an indemnity plan, which a lot of us would know like an Aflac plan. And so if you are hurt, if you have to take a, you have to take a ride to the hospital in an ambulance, it pays you cash for that. If you have to spend the night, if you get stitches, if you break a bone, if you have surgery, it pays cash to help, to help offset some of the costs that you may have missed. Now, on average, what happens is the value of the program is pre-taxed. So the, so there's not as much tax taken out of the person's paycheck from the tax savings the program's paid for. Now, this is all protected, it's all above board, we've got opinion letters, it's actually insured, the program is in itself, so there's no legal risk at all. But the bottom line is the employer, on average, sees four hundred and eighty-three dollars put back to their bottom line. That then that employer does whatever you want to with that funding, okay? Because that's money you didn't have to send off in employees' taxes. But also, on average, the employee sees an increase of take home pay by eighty-three dollars. That's on average. There's one point four million already on the program, and that's been the averages so far. So I could go into more detail, I'd be happy to on a more of an individual basis if you'd like to, but that is the thirty thousand foot view. So the bottom line is this. This is something that, that the city of Etoka could offer the employees and to their family. Now, again, the only thing that's not the family plan is the indemnity part, because it's just the employee that would miss work if they had to take a ride or spend the night in the hospital. The rest of it, absolute family plan, urgent care, no limit on how much it can be used. Does that make sense? The bottom line for the, for the, the bottom line for the employer, it would increase. Actually, the take home pay for the employee would also increase. So we've talked with the manager, we've talked with the, with the city attorney. And so what we would be asking, if this is something that, that there's at least an interest in, then what I would suggest is getting with whoever does payroll for the city. The third party administrator can just look at a W-2 employee census report that would be printed out. Then they could actually do a presentation that specifically shows the city of Etoka who all would qualify, who all would not, and why. And exactly what it would look like on the bottom line of the city of Etoka and for each employee. I hope that makes a little bit of sense, anyway.
So this is not a one and done, it, you have to qualify, there's, is there, is there medical?
Here's the qualifications, for an employer, for an employer, you have to have ten W-2 employees that make twenty-five thousand dollars or more per year. That the threshold is at twenty-five thousand dollars per year gross, because it takes that type of salary to create enough tax savings to actually pay for the program.
Okay. What about concentration of employees, if some choose to be on it, some choose not to, what?
Oh, so it's an automatic enroll, that once we go through it, then they get, they have twenty-one days to opt out. If they do decide to opt out, it just goes right, their paycheck goes right back to the way it was, no harm, no foul.
So explain the four hundred and eighty-three, because dollars you were, you were speaking about?
Yes.
Because you said, first you said the employer didn't have any, have to pay.
There's no out-of-pocket pay, that's correct.
So where does the forty, four hundred and eighty?
Where's it come from?
Yeah, there you go.
That's the first question that comes up every time, so congratulations. So the, the value of this program and the cost are two different things. If you've been reading especially tech magazines and they talk about AI increases your ROI, artificial intelligence can increase your bottom line. This is a prime example of it, okay? If all of us in here had this app on our phone by Amaze, it's literally, it tracks through AI all of these heart monitoring systems. Heart rate, heart fibrillation, blood, blood sugar, blood pressure, and you can literally get on this twenty times a day if you wanted to. And take that, and it monitors and it registers exactly what's happening. Now, if I were to have all these different kind of heart specialists on call, for me to reach out at any time for them to take my vitals, I'd have to be a very, very wealthy person. Does that make sense? To be able to afford all those services. So the third party administrator, which is a company called Amaze, they're the ones that actually creates the value, what is this program worth? They're the creator of the app, they're the ones that bring everything together. So they're saying the value of this specific program can be anywhere from the low end of six hundred dollars per month to fifteen hundred dollars a month, depending on the salary of the individual, okay? Now, the cost of this program is one cost, no matter what the salary of that employee is. Whether they just make the threshold of twenty-five thousand dollars, or they make two point one million dollars like our mayor here, okay? So everything in between.
Haven't seen that, but okay.
I'll try to dig it up later.
Look at chick chick, Nick.
But no matter what the salary is, the cost is the same per employee, forty dollars a month. So in the pre-tax, if this person says, hey, you qualify, you make twenty-five thousand dollars a year, you qualify for the Capstone Plus Six Hundred program, which has a value of six hundred dollars, but it only costs forty dollars. But that six hundred dollar value can't be taxed according to IRS laws. So in that employee, there's six hundred dollars that they've been paying taxes on, that the government can't take that taxes away from that portion. So that's six hundred dollars, by the time you pay for the program, there's not as much taxes taken out. So on an average, they're seeing money at the end of every year, or actually, it's actually instantly. But the savings per employee for the employer is four hundred and eighty-three dollars because of the tax savings. Well, out of what's left over, the forty dollars goes to pay for the actual program. The tax savings that's left over stays on the bottom line of the employer, and there's a portion of that then goes to the employee as an increase in take home pay. And that average is about eighty dollars. Now, if they just make twenty-five thousand dollars, they're not going to see an increase in their paycheck, and the employer's probably not going to see extra money. But on the other end, if you've got an employee that makes sixty thousand dollars, then there's going to be a lot more than four hundred and eighty-three dollars saved that year on that employee. And that employee's probably going to take home more than eighty-something dollars per paycheck. So the, here's a quick example, because of the tax savings, we can, and I told McAllister Public Schools this just the other day. We can do everything just as we're doing right now and take the tax dollars that we've been paying, like we always have, and send that to Oklahoma City, or send that to Washington DC, let them do whatever they want to with it as they do now. Or we can actually take some of that tax savings and provide the employee with a benefit for them and their family, and they're the ones that actually earn the money that's paying the taxes in the first place. But the bottom line is each employee would have the choice of opting out of that if they just didn't want to have access to those things. It's not a problem.
I, I don't know that there's that many people that have insurance, I mean, with the employees.
Now, I, and let me give you two examples real quick, and I'll make it fast, because somebody said, can this be a standalone? The answer is yes. Now, McAllister Public Schools is moving forward with the program. I'm excited. My wife teaches at McAllister Public Schools. Right now, I'm not a customer of this program that I'm bragging on right now. As soon as it goes live, I get to. What I do, since I own two small businesses, I actually pay a hundred and nine dollars per month for Mercy Care out of McAllister. And it's kind of an urgent care. I can call Dr. T- I can call Dr. Chelsea, or I can meet her at the clinic, or whatever. But it doesn't come with an indemnity plan, it doesn't come with the prescriptions, it doesn't come with the biometrics. But everything that they offer, my this app will offer and and more, okay? But what I told them what I told them I'm sorry, what was your question again? I'm sorry.
The how many employees are on?
Oh, yes. Okay, okay, yes, thank you. So for for Macalester out of I told Kelly, we will not stop using Health Choice. That's the insurance provided by the public school system. Because the what this doesn't include, yes, state insurance. What this doesn't include is catastrophic cancer, have diabetes, they got to amputate a limb, those sort of catastrophic programs. So we're not saying replace it. Now, Tricorp Security has fifteen hundred employees in Oklahoma City. And out of those fifteen hundred employees, the owner of that company only provides them a MECC plan, which is just minimum exposure coverage. Now, he does provide them out of his own pocket an Aflac plan, but that's it. By law, we're required to provide minimum exposure coverage. This does qualify for that. So for the employer at Tricorp, he said, so you're telling me if I do this program, it's paid for through tax savings? So what I do pay out of my pocket for their existing MECC plan and for their Aflac plan, I could drop that, and this would actually do the same thing, but better? The answer is yes. So if you do have some employees that don't have any insurance at all, I would strongly, even if you don't do this, oh heavens, they need at least to have a minimum exposure coverage plan. But if you do have employees that have a catastrophic plan through Blue Cross or Blue Shield or whatever, I'm not suggesting they replace that. This would be something that would complement it.
I'm not familiar enough, off the top of my head, to know how many employees actually utilize the.
Interested in it.
As far as the insurance coverage, most most employees do have employer-based major medical here, the Blue Cross plan.
Yeah, but some of them just choose not to take it.
It is, yeah, it is their option, yeah.
And that's their option. So that was that was me asking me the I was asking the question for those people that are not interested in it, you know?
Oh, they can opt out. Oh, yeah.
I mean, I don't think that they would even want to opt in, is what I'm saying.
Well, now, the way it works is it is an automatic to opt in, but it it's a click of a box to opt out.
Can you, John, you've researched some of this with Cory?
Yeah, I mean, I I think that it it appears on its face to be legal, it, you know, it it's a new, kind of a new area of law, a new new plan that Congress established, I don't know what, two years has it been in place? So there's just really not a lot of people to call and say, hey, how do you like it? How do you not like it? I think last we talked, there really wasn't any government entities in in our area that had signed up. I think there was a couple of states that maybe were in process of doing it.
Two, there's one in Arkansas that we can get ahold of. I can tell you, the group, Capstone itself, in the last six months, they've onboarded one point four million employees. And I can tell you right now, the opt-in, to stay opted in, it's over ninety-nine and a half percent. It's it's ridiculously high.
And so you're, forgive me, I don't know all the terminologies, but your your Aflac-based side of the program, how do those limits compare if it's a cancer or a personal injury, or what what options are in?
So I actually had the lady that's over Aflac in this area come and look at this, and we're having some ongoing discussions. But the indemnity plan is the one thing that is based on the income. The only difference is if you do have someone that just makes twenty-five thousand dollars per year and qualifies for it, like their ride to the emergency room may be a payout of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Whereas your higher-paid employees, that same instance would pay three hundred and fifty dollars. And so there's some payout differences based on the tax savings, and that's all based on salary. But it's very, very, I can tell you that for me and my wife and both of my parents, we've got Aflac right now through both of our stores, through the candy store and the soda shop. And with with what I would qualify, I would actually have a higher indemnity plan than what we're paying for with Aflac right now.
I know it's something new, I mean, any opportunity, I mean, self personally, I'd like to look at it further, just to see what what opportunities there are. I don't know if it's something that the council or the city manager would move forward with, but
Sure.
looking at a deeper dive at that, if there's other options for our employees to give them some more coverages, if it's potential to work out.
Might see who's interested instead of, you know.
Well, I think we'd have to have something to handle, you know, showing
Oh, yeah, I've got that.
And basically, basically, if it's based off their income, then we take here it is for their income, and it's going to take city staff a while to figure that up. But but I think, you know, with Mr. Dela being out this week, just if you had something that you could send us that we could review and look at.
And maybe see how many people would be interested in it, you know?
Sure.
I mean, because some of them don't have it, and some some of them have others, so, you know.
Sure.
And it took me a few minutes just to understand it.
Well, yeah, it's not not having something.
This is a well, this, in fact, I did, I was kind of shocked to even see take action on approving or rejecting, because there's 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 no way. I mean, this isn't something that a standing in front of a podium for fifteen minutes can even start to cover. But this is just an introduction, but I'd I'd actually like to have the opportunity at some point, and and I'm willing to take my own time to do it, of course. But anybody that would want to to sit down and and I actually go through the presentation, I'd be more than happy to. Yeah, for sure.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much, though, I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments this time? Cory, thank you, appreciate it very much. All right, as we move along to item number five, discussion and or action to award Miller Asphalt to overlay job of Dunbar Drive from Tenth to Twelfth Street in the amount of thirty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. That's attachment four in your packet.
This is a continuation of an ongoing project on fixing or resurfacing Dunbar. City manager previously had come to y'all and got approval, and had did from Thirteenth to Twelfth. This is he he wants to proceed north on that, going from Twelfth to Tenth, and actually would make it look much better, because only about half the street is resurfaced at this point.
Yeah.
And then hopefully, if the funding works, we've talked about that, over some grants, then we would look at going east-west on Tenth Street next year.
Finish the park.
If it works out to where we could get on around towards Indiana from Johnson Park. But this right here would bring it from Thirteenth Street, would complete the project as far as the the north-south on to the main part of Dunbar.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I recommend approving. On second.
Have a motion to second, rule call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
And I don't know if anybody's been able to drive on some of these streets where you've surfaced, but they are a significant improvement over some of the streets we've had in the past. And I appreciate the city staff working hard to try to continue that all over town. Okay, item number six, discussion and or action on approving or rejecting Oklahoma Purchasing System inter-local cooperation agreement between Etoka-Pope schools and the City of Etoka. Gene, you have.
Interviewed with the city manager on this, he had researched it some as well, and is a no-cost membership to the city. And it's a a quick method, and as opposed to doing the CO bids. It's comparable, I would give another another alternative to such as state statewide contract purchasing and Sourcewell. It would just be another method that the city could employ.
Is everybody familiar with the state con, it's how we purchase most of our police vehicles and city vehicles? And we've used Sourcewell once or twice on a few pieces of equipment. I don't remember what those were, if they were.
And you said this was free?
Yeah, it's a no-cost membership to the city.
Our favorite kind, right?
Yeah, I see David Lasseter and Jay McAdams, okay.
We, there's been some com, discussion on our Oklahoma Municipal Attorney's kind of listserv board about this, because no one, you know, it's kind of circled around with other cities, and no one really knew what it was or what the purpose of it was, and no one really has provided any answers on the listserv, so I don't really I I've heard it circulated, but I don't really know a lot about it, so has anyone talked to you guys about it, or?
Not to me. I know they they sit down with the city manager.
Interviewed with the city manager, and I'm personally not familiar with it, other than what he had discussed with me.
Is that something you would prefer to review further in as far as the legal?
Yeah, I think so.
Review of that?
Yeah, I think so. There's just been some questions kind of tossed around within the attorney's group. Probably should flesh out a little bit more. Just table that, and we'll put it on the next one.
Yeah, we'll table this until our city city attorneys had time to review. Item number seven, discussion and or action on issuing a solicitation for bid for construction of a state stage structure in downtown Park. On this, we've been trying to get the final, some final drawings, just feel like it would be a good opportunity to go out for bids, but to do that, my understanding is we would have to have basically an estimate from our architect and then encumber those funds, is that correct? How do we, what's the legal process?
I've actually posed that question to the same city attorney's group, because I have, that's what I was told previously. I I think by city staff, that was their understanding of the process, but I can't find that anywhere in the statutes. But to be fair, I haven't read all of the purchasing statutes in detail, because they're a bajillion pages long, so I've sent that out, but I haven't got a response back to them. But I can't find it anywhere, so I don't really know that that's the case. I know we purchase a lot of things without encumbering the funds prior to entering the contract, and I don't think you're bound to accept any bids, you know,
Right.
prior to, so you know, just because you're soliciting them. Although I think it would be a waste of time to solicit bids and not have the the funds available, and if you don't know what it's going to cost, it it that's probably problematic, but I can't find where it it's a problem to go ahead and solicit the bids other than we don't really know what to expect when we do do that, so. Do we have plans ready?
We do have plans that need to be presented to the board, and I don't, has everybody seen any of the renderings or anything? I don't have them with me, but we can bring that, go, do you have a, have you, do you know if anybody's been sent those?
I asked them to send them to me.
Okay.
I think I have them there.
Probably need some copies of those for the board to review, but I know in the past, on the larger projects, where there was going to be either grants or indebtedness taken on on municipal projects like water, wastewater, those object, those those type, you have a pre-engineering, an engineering survey done, and then they provide us with a cost analysis to know what to go out for bid.
Yeah.
I would just hate to go out, I'd hate to say, well, we found a million dollars to spend.
Right, yeah, I totally understand that as well.
Well, that's, but that is something I did read, that those cost estimates that you get are public record, and the bidders are entitled to know of those amounts prior to submitting a bid. So that is kind of dumb from a practical standpoint, because you're now telling everybody, you expect, you know, we've got this much money ready to go, this is what we're expecting, so there's no chance your bid's going to come in much lower than that, any of them, you know? But that the the law specifically said those those estimates are public records, so perhaps if we don't have the estimate, it might be better for us.
There's been a lot of changes to the plan over the time, and just modifications to make everything fit, because some of the original concepts, when there was a preliminary number, were just out of the realm of reality for a town our size, so.
Mayor, is the city bound to accept the lowest bid? Do we have to go with the lowest bid?
Yes and no.
Yes and no.
No, not really. If you announce ahead of time that you want to give preference to local contractors, you can't accept a bid that is not the lowest, as long as it's no more than five percent higher than the lowest. But you have to give that notice ahead of time, the preference will be given to lowest contractors. You also don't have to accept the lowest bid if there is a good reason not to, you know?
Some of the terminology that used to be used is lowest and best.
We've used this contractor before, he was terrible, we're not using him again.
You might send that to me.
Other reasons.
It could be from business practices, or if if material lists aren't spelled out very specifically of the type of materials, and they try to use a lesser material than other contractors would use, that would help them have an advantage, then that that's where that lowest and best comes in. And I don't know if that's verbatim the correct terminology.
You have to document why you're not accepting the lowest bid. There has to be a good valid reason for that, so.
So we need.
But to me, I just think we need a starting point of
Agreed.
of what what's this going to cost, and and we may have to trim back. I mean, he sent these designs, but it's it may be, it looks really nice, but we may have to go. That is very nice, but our budget says this, we're going to have to trim it back, so I think we've got to pull the trigger and go out and at least get some estimates.
So you know, there's been a lot of lot of meetings over this, and and just planning meetings, nothing that's been quote-unquote approved that I can remember by the board. Do you, Kobe, do you remember if we had anything brought before the board when we talked about the stage in the past?
No, we just.
Okay, so everybody else, okay. I'm, there's there's a lot of meetings that happened during the week, and I'm trying to keep them all straight, so I guess the next step would be prepare renderings and and plans for the for the council to review.
Approved, yeah.
And approve, and then I think you could, if they approve it, then we can go forward from there.
And I did read in there, the estimation of cost can be done by the city. You know, the city could say, ah, this is what we think it's going to cost. It doesn't necessarily have to be something that the architect does. But it it does seem to suggest there needs to be some type of estimation done.
I did ask him to send us something, but like everything, that when they want to bid on it too, it gets a little.
More expensive.
So.
Well, and you may, you know, if you know of someone who is kind of knows about it, you may send it to them and see if they can.
I've had several people reach out to me of other contractors that they know of that would be interested, that they feel like would be interested in bidding on the job and other local contractors, I think, and, you know, to be fair, I think if we're building a project in Etoka, it needs to be open to our our local contractors to see if they're they're able to do it.
Yeah, the problem with with the whole construction management thing, which is what we did with the park, is it costs so much more money to to go into a project like that. I mean, we could probably could have did the park a lot cheaper, but but the law requires that, you know, in in most cases, you have to to do something like that, so.
Well, also, when you're, do we have the staff available
Yes.
and trained to know if this is done correctly, if it's not done correctly? I mean, part of that construction management versus a there are two variations, construction management versus a prime general contractor with with subs underneath them is the difference. And so those are the two kind of variations, and
I don't know that the stage, the stage warrants all of that.
Correct, I would agree. It's not, we're not putting a medical facility in, so, but
And who is?
You know, design bill firms, construction management, kind of same, same thing, so. So we need to bring up some some drawings for everyone to look at, and then look at doing a solicitation at that time?
Yeah.
After we decide on the final design?
Yeah.
Are y'all, y'all hear that?
Yeah, and he hasn't charged us anything for these, that's why, I think that's why it probably was not a council item, because he just said, let me draw, give y'all some rendering. renderings.
Yeah. And he's done a ton of work doing those drawings, but again, Ambler Architectsors who's helped us with this, and they have not charged for any of the, uh, architectural fees on the stage. Which would be considerable. So, um, so at this time, I guess, till we get the other components that we need for the council to make a decision on the design, that no action will be taken on this, item nine, is everybody?
Yes.
Pat, where do you want, where do you want to swing in onto the stage? You, you need to have some input on that, where you.
Well, I have all sorts of talent.
There's multiple talents that we need to plan for.
Multiple talents.
I understand. All right, we'll, we'll, we'll work on those, when you see the drawings, you tell us where you need those anchor points. Okay, thank you. I look forward to seeing the results of that. Good. Um, item number eight, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the 2025 scheduled meeting dates for the Atoka City Council, Atoka Municipal Authority, Atoka City Industrial Development Authority, the Atoka Industrial Facilities Authority, the Atoka City Emergency Management Authority, the Atoka City Airport Authority Trust, Atoka Municipal Golf Authority, and ATCM.
These were all previously approved individually at different meetings, and, uh, the city clerk, kind of defer to her if there's any questions on that, because my understanding is that it was requested now that comprehensively they all be.
Approved at once.
Approved at once as a group.
Yeah, it's just a master list with all of them together on one page.
Okay.
I recommend approving.
My second.
Have a motion of second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number nine, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the personnel manual effective November fourth, twenty twenty-four. Would that need to have an emergency declared if we?
No, there's no, no ordinance or anything, it's just adopting our, the personal, we've circulated this around for probably a year, and we've made some tweaks to it, probably still some other tweaks that need to be made to it, I know Erica's not here, but I think she, uh, had some concerns, but, uh, we've just had some personnel issues arise, um, within the past two weeks that we really wanna just go ahead and get this approved, and then if we wanna tweak it or make some changes later on, we can do that, but.
Yeah, 'cause I had talked to Kelly about some things too, so.
We need to get something in place to, to deal with some of the issues we've been having with, with some staff, and, and then.
So what you're telling us is this, this document is not written in a, on a block of granite?
It's not written in stone, but approve it tonight, and then if you wanna make changes later, we can do that.
Okay, but it's effective, November the fourth today, so.
Yes.
So anything that happened before that.
Correct, but it, it will, it will help us out moving forward.
Sounds good, okay, I recommend approving.
My second.
Motion of second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number ten, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the purchase of a twenty twenty-four F-two-fifty from Vance Country Ford in the amount of fifty-three thousand four oh nine.
This is actually, y'all remember, the city manager came to you in the past and had asked for approval on purchase of two, and he was working some grant aspects, one was purchased, this would actually be for capital improvement, this would technically be the second one that was already discussed and had been previously approved, but this way, if, uh, get approval on this tonight, uh, city staff can put the placement in, and they should be able to get these vehicles relatively soon.
Yeah, I remember.
And these items were in the budget, correct?
Yes, yes, the money's there.
Okay.
I recommend approving, I remember Danny talking about it, so.
My second.
Have a motion of second, roll call please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number eleven, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the recommendation of the Atoka Planning Commission regarding the request by the Harold D. and Carolyn Rowland Family Trust to change the current R-two general residential district to C-two highway commercial district for the property described as lots one, two, seven, and eight, block three, and block five, Nelson Bluff Edition, Atoka, Oklahoma. Mr. Rowland's here with us, um, from my understanding, the, uh, planning commission approved that, is that correct, sir? To move forward, and, uh, there was no opposition to it that evening at the meeting, correct? Okay.
I think that it's in there, the meeting, and it's, uh.
So.
Where's this at?
On Virg- if you take Virginia from sixty-nine seventy-five around behind the Dollar Store, that the empty, the house, and part, half of that, basically half of that vacant lot behind the house is your property, and then the other half belongs to AmeriState Bank, which I believe is probably already zoned commercial, so you have commercial on two to three sides of you there, so. And actually, we've made just, not too long ago, I believe there was another lot that was changed from R-one to C-two for the clinic, right through to the north, so.
Okay, yes, uh, I recommend approving.
Okay.
My second.
Have a motion of second, roll call please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Thank you. Item twelve, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the recommendation of the Atoka Planning Commission regarding the request to approve the amended plat agreement for Capitol Hill Edition located in section fifteen, Township Two South, Range Eleven East, Atoka County, Oklahoma.
I would just, uh, note that planning and zoning did not make a recommendation on this, um, this is the, uh, plat for the development, the housing development on Sixth Street, it was previously approved by planning and zoning and by the council, um, however, they had to make some changes to it, so this is asking to approve the amended plat. Uh, planning and zoning did, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but planning and zoning tabled the matter because they were not able to get a hold of Mr. Daniel and didn't really know what was being changed. Since then, uh, I think Susan has talked to Mr. Daniels, and none of the lot layouts have changed, it was just changes made to the engineering, kind of the underlying engineering, um, and so while planning and zoning didn't have that information, um, I would recommend the council go ahead and approve it, uh, because there's not any significant changes that are being made to anything other than top, topography type things.
Drainage, drainage capabilities, those kind of things?
Correct.
No cost, uh, different, you know, different shows or anything like that?
No, no, no changes to any of the housing designs or, or any of that, no.
If anything, it probably would cost them more money with the changes due to the drainage corrections and things of that nature.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I recommend approving.
My second.
Have a motion of second, roll call please.
Mr. Turner?
No.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. All right, as we move down, is there any new business? Oh, nope, sorry, missed one, not used to having that one. Y'all gotta watch me, I'll slide by one. Okay, under C, public requested agenda items, item one, discussion and/or action on waiving the fee to use the community building for county meeting.
Uh, last week, I got a call from Ms. Thompson asking, uh, she could, spoke with Danny about wanting to use the community building for a county, a meeting of some, for county residents to attend to talk about the, uh, increased tax, um, and Danny told her that he could not waive the fee on the building, and, uh, that our only next step would be to come to the council to s- to see, uh, if the council would approve giving them the building. So that's where we're at, that's about as much as I know about it. I don't think we have, to my knowledge, we've given, uh, any waivers in the past, but, um.
Haven't given in the churches any, or at all, that I know.
So, I'd, but I, if somebody wants to be on the agenda, I want them to be heard, so that's why I brought it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it's, uh, but Danny, you know, he said, he told her that he couldn't waive that, and so I wanted to bring it here, um, or she asked me to bring it tonight, she couldn't be here, but, um, that's about all I have on.
I think there's, there's been several other times that fees have been asked to be waived on the building, and to my knowledge, and they weren't, um.
What is the fee?
Two hundred and fifty?
Two hundred.
With the fifty-dollar deposit, isn't it?
I think it's two hundred and a fifty dollar.
And a fifty-dollar deposit, okay. And I guess he gets fifty-dollar deposit back if everything's?
Yeah, it's, in the event that something's damaged or something like that.
I understand that, but I don't think that.
But this name, it may be a little.
Yeah, that's kind of an outdated figure, fifty dollars on damages and cleaning, so, uh, and it is, it's, it's a difficult spot, I understand the position that he was in, uh, when he made that, but he does have several requests for it, but it's also one of the things when, you know, it's one of those doors, if you open, that you ever get closed again, so.
Well, if that's the case, you would, we'd, I mean, every church would ask for it to be free, you know, we would.
And then I think you would get into potentially, if you discussed it for being for business purposes, you might potentially get into the aspect of, are we gonna have to have staff monitor people that do get a fee waived to make sure that they're actually discussing business, you know, um, so I don't know.
Yeah.
It would be my recommendation not to open Pandora's box, as harsh as it seems.
I agree.
Yeah, because there have been nonprofits I know that have asked for things for valid reasons, this is a valid reason too, but, um, they've always had to pay, so.
Some of those that have asked for it were turned down, and they found a sponsor to, to sponsor the rental of the building for them, so.
Or found another place, you know, maybe some other churches or something like that, the big auditoriums or.
Any other discussion on the matter? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Make the motion, we do not waive the fee.
Have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
I agree, yes.
Have a motion of second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Ca- and Mr. Kathy?
Yes. All right, as we move down, is there any new business at this time? Now I can do it, there's none, so now we'll move to council comments. Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Motion of second, roll call please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes, here, where are we at?
We're adjourning, we're adjourning.
Yes, we're adjourning.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. All right, as we move into our next business meeting, the Atoka Municipal Authority, which call roll please?
Ms. Poe? Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Chairman Kathy?
Here. All right, as this is the public comment time, if there's anything that is not on the posted agenda, you may address the council at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to business agenda, item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I recommend approving.
My second.
Have a motion of second, roll call please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the purchase of a twenty twenty Ford, twenty twenty-four Ford F-two-fifty from Vance Country Ford in the amount of fifty-three thousand four oh nine.
I recommend approving.
My second.
Have a motion of second, roll call please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Let's move down, is there any new business? Any trustee comments?
You make that motion.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn, that's what.
My second.
And a second, there's the other side of it, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Sit here. I'll sit here.
All right, as we move into our, what I believe to be the last meeting of the evening.
Can you say yes on here?
He said here, can he say yes?
Do you wanna adjourn, you said here, do you wanna adjourn?
Oh.
Sorry, I didn't catch it either. I knew what you meant.
I thought we was already starting another deal.
I'm not pointing any fingers at anybody.
Say yes.
He did, he did, he said yes, all right.
Just start saying yes or here.
So, let's roll, all these storms moving around, the electrical surge. So, all right, the last meeting of the evening, Atoka City Industrial Development Authority, which call roll please?
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes, no, I'm here. 'Cause I've done it a million times too. All right, as we move down, public comments, this is anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down, item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I recommend approving.
My second.
Have a motion of second, roll call please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the Economic Development Director's report. Are you economic development now?
Here, here, um, here you go.
Well, I'll field it for him, I guess would say, uh, and he is accept, still accepting positions both for the economic development and the tourism, and, uh, will be getting back with y'all to formulate a process over the selection as far as a committee or, uh, how you want to do the interviews, he, he does very strongly want the council's support in some capacity, either by committee or by group for economic development for sure, and then would ask for your direction going forward on whether you want him to do one-on-one interviews for the tourism, or if you would like to, uh, proceed with it the same way as economic development.
Okay.
Yes, well, I talked to Danny, I think we, we had talked a little bit about maybe getting the, uh, economic director first, and then letting Danny and maybe the economic director get together and do whatever that position.
For tourism?